Hallelujah! At the name of God, we pray. Today is the day of our Lord Jesus Christ. We will pray for him. Hallelujah! Let us pray. Let us pray, pray, pray. Let us pray for the Lord Jesus Christ. Today is the day of our Lord Jesus Christ. Let us pray for the Lord Jesus Christ. The Lord Jesus Christ is with us. He is our God. Let us pray. Let us pray, pray, pray. He is our God. Let us pray. Let us pray, pray, pray. Let us pray. Let us pray. Hallelujah! Singing of the Lord Jesus Christ. 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 Angels, angels, angels. Angels, angels, angels. Angels, angels, angels. Angels, angels, angels. Singing of the Lord Jesus Christ. 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 Angels, angels, angels. Angels, angels, angels. Angels, angels, angels. Singing of the Lord Jesus Christ. 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 Hallelujah! Angels, angels, angels. 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 Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Singing of the Lord Jesus Christ. 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 The Lord Jesus Christ is with us. 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 Hallelujah! 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 Hallelujah!
Bible says in John, chapter 15, verse 16.
The Lord Jesus said, "You did not choose me, but I chose you."
Here, the Lord has written a purpose for choosing us. There is a purpose for the Lord to choose us. This scripture says about why the Lord chose us. It is because for the Father who answered our prayers. It is because for a life to be fruitful. To be stable in the life of fruit giving. That's the reason for him to choose us. Not only that, if we read it. This verse says, "The one who is holy in love." He chose us to be not without blame. We can see differences in the Lord's choosing. To make his all purpose fulfilled. With me, read Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 6. To do the purpose through Christ. He has predestined us to adoption as sons of Jesus. It is written as predestined. The Lord has chosen us. For us to reach the fullness of. Galatians 4:4 says, "But when the fullness of the night had come, God sent for his son, an woman born under the law." To receive. Bring us out of this. But he has been adopted. Why? Because to receive his blessings and other things. You can read in John, chapter 1, verse 12. When we receive him and we accept them, we are becoming his children. Be very carefully with me. We are being adopted by God as children of God. At which age this adoption happens? In the world, when a family doesn't have children, they go to adopt children. In what age the child type has to be? Not the person who is old. Not youth. They are selecting and adopting children. All children are being adopted. What the Lord expects from us? What is the thing of adoption? In John 3:3, if you read. When the Lord was starting, Nicodemus says to God. You have to be born again. Nicodemus asks, "How can a man be born again?" It is a thing of coming to the Lord's hand as children. When the Lord is willing to adopt us as his children. We have to come as children. We have to come as babies. We must be born again. What is born again? Why the Bible says to be born again? When a man accepts Jesus' prophet. When he accepts and be faithful in him. When he confesses his sins. When he accepts Christ Jesus as the Lord's son of God. When for his sins to be watched away when he gets baptized. At this time, he becomes a born again child. This children are being adopted by God. This children are being chosen by God. The Lord says, "I have taken this children." When, what happens in the adoption? There are so many things in the Bible. There are so many different persons we described in the Bible. When a man is adopting a child. What he has to do to adopt the child. He brings his expectations and all things on the child. He wants to make the child grow in his own vision. Let the Lord be good. With me, you can see a few people in the Bible. So that while comparing, we can understand how God is adopting us. When God adopts for a particular purpose, it is different. If a work and a purpose, it's different. Adopting is different. To appointing for a work is different. Adopting as a child is different. Listen very carefully with me, Exodus, chapter 2. Exodus, chapter 2, verse 9 and 10 says. Moses was thrown into a river to die. When the pharaoh's doctor comes to the river. The verse is 9 and 10 says like this. The pharaoh's doctor wants the child to be grown. The pharaoh's doctor gives the baby to the mother. She says she will be giving wages for them. Listen very carefully, the 10th verse says. She drew him out of water and named him Moses. He was drawn from water. Pharaoh thought of adopting him. She says, "He is my child." This baby is mine. The mother of the baby turns the one who is gonna. Look very carefully. Look the life of Moses. Moses was trained in all things of Egypt. Moses was trained in all words of the law. Because a pharaohs thought of adopting him. Yeah, Moses' mother would have nursed him. Not everything was available with the Bible. The glasses which Moses has to be trying was. This Bible, this scripture says, "When Pharaohs got the rock," says. She gives everything what Moses wanted. She gives what the slipwad first future. In what way she wished him to be grown up, she did it. Let the Lord be glorified. When a man adopts a baby. We are seeing how pharaohs don't allow it. How perfectly he was traveling through the vision. Let the Lord be glorified. Let's see with me another person. Why I'm telling these? You have to know about adoption of God. You and I have been adopted by God. In this world, a man adopts a child, what happens? I am telling you this because what happens, you have to know what happens if God helps us. Samuel, chapter 3. This, uh, chapter 3 says. Samuel was brought to Eric. He was under the control of Eric. If you could carefully listen to me. He have to see, he can see how Samuel's life got transformed. Samuel talks with God. Samuel turned to listening to the word of God. Samuel grew up with the presence of the Lord. What Samuel 3, verse 19 and 20, can read. So Samuel grew, is written. The Lord was with him. The 20th verse says. Samuel was the prophet of the Lord. Until all from down to Beersheba, all Israelites was known about him. There was a purpose for the Lord. There was a bigger plan for Samuel. To fulfill the purpose. He has to be guided by Eric. He has to live with Eric. Eat everything Eric has. When Lord talks with you, you have to answer this way. You have to do the worship in this way. You have to guide the people of God this way. If he would have been an anah. If by anah, with Samuel would have grown up. He would have been a good character boy. He would have been a brave man. But there was a purpose of God. God into that vision. He joined, he was living with Eric. The Lord is around to us. When apostle Paul writes to Ephesians. You are the children of God. To turn as the children of God. The Lord has a purpose for us. He will fulfill that purpose. You can see another person. Esther, chapter 2, verse 7 says. Moragai adopted Esther. Moragai adopted Esther as his child. When he sees about Esther waking up. This scripture says. She lost his father and mother. When she was left alone. When a child is alone. This Bible verse says, "Moragai has adopted her as a child." Moragai starts to help. Everything which she needs, Moathadai takes care of. Each and every day, Moathadai supplies her. If you could see, if you could read Esther, uh, chapter two, verse twenty. Esther two twenty says. When Esther was living Moathadai. When she was built Moathadai. This Bible verse says. She obeyed the command of Moathadai. When she was a child. Each and everything Moathadai teaches. Each and everything he teaches her. Everything which her life needs, she teaches. How she has to walk, how she has to act, how she has to talk. She starts to grow with it. He grows her. When a challenge comes in the nation. When a challenge comes to appoint a leader of nation. Moathadai appoints Esther in that company. Esther was appointed in that company. This Bible verse says. When, when, in her young age, what Moathadai taught her. Fortunately, she worked on that. This verse says very beautifully. Esther didn't expect anything. She didn't expect anything more than what she has given her. She expected what is in her. Listen very carefully. When you could see how Moathadai taught her. He guided her to a victory. She was there, talked towards victory. When a man adopts and grows her up. He, he takes her to a most high position in the nation. A man adopts a child and teaches her. When that man can turn into a big prophet in the nation. When his sister adopts a child. To appoint him as a leader for millions. As a purpose for Lord and Allah. He has a purpose for adopting us. We are being adopted as the children of God. The Lord is guiding us towards this vision. Each and every day, he's guiding us towards this good vision. So many times, we are running away. We are running away. We are running away from. We are choosing our own path and running. The Bible says. Before he is formed in the mother's womb. The Lord has chosen us as his own child. That's why he has designed us, created us. Listen to me very carefully about a true incident. Uh, a previous incident has happened. Theodore, Theodore Harvard Somerset. Listen very carefully about him. Who is this Samuel? He had a willing in mountain climbing. He studied medicine. But he was very excited in climbing the mountains. Many places he climbed the mountains. He was from England. In nineteen twenty-four, he got so many medals and, uh, certification in mountain climbing. He has received a gold medal in Olympics. There are so many medals he received. His aim was to climb the mountains. He takes so many efforts for mountain climbing. This is very carefully. The, what is the major aim for all mountain climbers? They have a vision to reach Mount Everest. He also had the same. He and his friend George Miller. They formed up a team and they started to climb the mountain. The, the, this thing was the first one to, uh, start for climbing Mount Everest. Each and every time when they climbed. They're flying a bit and they return back. They travel a bit, but they couldn't breathe, so returned back. They reached five thousand meters and they couldn't move forward. In this situation. Three times. After trying three times and got defeated. In between of this time, the strength. After the death of George Miller. He was alone and he, he had a small team with him. Again, he's trying to climb the mountain. So many hindrances after that he tries. Uh, with him, a trial share pass. They are the one who, who's like, uh, giving helping hand for the mountain climbers. They are the local people who stay in the mountains. They know the path of travel. They will be guiding and accompanying. With them when he climbs the mountain. They had reached almost more than eight thousand five hundred meters. It is very carefully. At that time, that was the top most reached goal. No, no one has reached eight thousand five hundred. They have put in so much effort to travel over. Only few minutes to reach the top. They has to travel a few more hundred thousand. When they were doing that efforts. What happened there? It is said like avalanche, Himalayan avalanche. It is a snowstorm. It rushes them with the snow. At that time, the snowstorm was going. They couldn't climb up. Oh, it is like the waves of tsunami and rolling. It rolls everything which. They are rolling towards them. He and his team members are standing. When it reached near them. They are in the tip of tail. In just few minutes. The end of everybody's life. We are not gonna die in that last minute. What happened, you know? Those, the snow which came, ice. The ice avalanche which came. It's tight iceberg. It divorces into two. It separates and it goes forward. It passes in. He stands right. You listen to the Bible verse carefully. When God chooses us. That the Lord has a purpose for us. The situation can over. The Himalayan avalanche passes in. What happened? He turns back and sees. There was no one left with him. No one was there on the field. He was standing alone. The Lord's purpose is not what we got. The Lord has a bigger plan for us. The man comes down from the mountain. He started to reduce and finally to stop mountain climbing. When he comes back. There is a village near Kirunandh Broh in the state of Kerala. It was in Kanyam Maril. When he went to that place. He sees a small hospital there. There, there's a huge queue of people. Those people were affected by the disease of avalanches. There are at least five hundred men standing before a small building. There is only one doctor in that hospital. So many hundred people are suffering. Will this man goes there, he sees that. He goes inside the hospital. He drives the chairs into. He calls the people and started giving medicine. He started to treat them. He, he was a doctor in the first world war. He left those medicines and things and. The Lord hid her down and he brought her back. When he saw the people. He again sacrificed their. He goes back to his nation and says all of his assets. He, he builds up the hospital. Until today, the hospital is there. It is like a medical college now. It has been grown up into a big medical college. So many thousands of people have been blessed. He came to Vedur Christian Medical College and said, show me. Why we are telling this? If God chooses you for a purpose. But he's not gonna let you to go away from his purpose. You are running, we are running from. In situations, we are crossing. The Lord has adopted us. He has decided how we are to. The family decides how the child which has been adopted to be. How the family supplies the needs of the child. More than a family, thousands of the Lord has built blessing. This Bible verse says. Uh, the people chosen and adopted children are being turned into kings and prophets. The Lord will do that for us. Lord's sake. You will not choose me. I chose you. To reach the children. To receive everything from the Lord. The Lord who chose you will give. He will guide us towards the vision. If you could believe. Trust and hold his hand. The Lord who chooses will never. He will guide us in the vision. Lord, Lord has blessings for you. Let us close our eyes and pray. It is evening, let the Lord bless us. Uh, we are not children. We are his own people. Father, for this evening we pray. You have adopted us as your own children. You have a purpose for us. You have a purpose for a future. Lord, you are the one who is guiding us directly to. In this evening, we pray for the people who are listening to the Lord. In each and every people, who are listening to the Lord. Lord, it's children of God. Let them receive God. Lord, you said, Lord, yours is ours. Lord, let us take all the blessings which you have for us. We give everyone in your mind, gracious. Lord, let him ask, he has your purpose. Let your grace hold us. In Jesus's name we pray. Keep praying, this meeting will be there, take it at seven o'clock, come and participate, let the Lord be.